Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm gonna get the planning board meeting started on January 5th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. 6:00. Stand up for pledge.
..................
...
If anybody hasn't signed in, just find the sign sheet.
Has everybody signed in that's here? There's a signup sheet going around. If they do, they please sign in. Um, do you want to go over the minutes? We'll start December 1st.
Uh, well, we have two from November.
Did everybody get the reading? Well, November 1st. Did you get the reading? Ben, did you get the reading?
Yeah, all the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a move, motion to approve the minutes from the November 3rd, November 17th, and December 1st minutes as written.
All favor. All opposed. All right.
And I have one change on the minutes from the 15th.
Okay.
The first sentence on the pending project should read, "Planning Board noted the upcoming public hearing on January 5th, 2023 for David Peppin mineral extraction." Vice Wood's written.
Sure. John, what was that on?
Uh, December 15th. Pending projects, last page, first sentence. It wasn't a roundtable.
Right, right.
So that should read, "The Planning Board noted the upcoming public hearing on January 5th, 2023 for David Peppin mineral extraction." And that's the only change I had.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion where you approve the minutes as modified for December 15th, 2022.
All the favor. All opposed. All right, next up is a public hearing for David Peppin mineral extraction. Before we get it started, everybody signed in that's been, is in here now? All right. If you have any comments, you direct them to directly to the board. You don't look back to the public. It's to us. Probably five minute time to talk. And I guess we'll open it up with Matt Peppin on the description of what he's gonna do and how he's gonna run it.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Excellent. Good evening. So my name is Matt Peppin, and I'm the fourth generation of our Peppin and Sons Inc. in Sanford. And I'm here with my brother Isaac tonight, and my dad Dave and mom Denise. We are looking to try to get a gravel pit approved. And this gravel pit's located between the H Road in Acton and West Shore Drive in Acton. The total property is about 500 acres, but we're only looking to try to get approved about 85 acres of that for gravel extraction. For our, this is for our small business in Sanford where we supply concrete. So we've been working with the planning board for quite some time on this project. And we've, we're really excited about it. We think that it's a good thing for our company, but we also think that it's gonna be a good thing for the community. We will be on this site for over 30 years probably. And we're gonna be essentially out in the woods. We're not gonna be seen. We're not gonna be heard. We're gonna be pretty secluded out on this large, large parcel of land. And I do wanna kinda get more into the precautions, the extra precautions that we're gonna take to make sure that this doesn't have an impact on anyone here or any of the neighbors. But for now, I guess I'll kinda stick with some more of the specifics. We have a long history of gravel pits in Acton. My grandfather Roger did a gravel pit right off of West Shore Drive that's actually still being mined by my uncle. And he started that back in the 60s and was mining out of there for about 30-plus years. And that, that, the way that he operated it is the same way that we operate our pits today. Safely, he followed all the right precautions. And as a result of, of the way that he managed it and he operated it, it had no impact on Square Pond, which was right nearby. It had no impact on any of the other water bodies nearby. And it's gonna be the same with this gravel pit. We've hired some of the leading people, leading engineers. I don't want you just to take my word for it. I've got John Marshica from St. Germain Engineering here tonight. And he's a groundwater hydrologist that we hired for this project. And he's put together a groundwater monitoring plan where we actually have about six or seven wells installed out on the site where we have to monitor the water levels at all time to make sure that we don't get too close to the groundwater table when we're digging. And we've got a whole plan where we have to submit information to the town on an annual basis about what's going on with the water levels out there. And John is here tonight. If anyone has specific concerns about how an operation like this might affect lakes or drinking water, he's a great researcher. He's a certified hydrologist. And he is available to answer questions if anybody wants to talk to him. So going on, we do, we want this project to be a win for everyone. We're, part of this project is we're planning on donating 93 acres of this parcel to Three Rivers Land Trust. And we've been working with Carl Davis and others over at the land trust to make this happen. I don't know if you can highlight that area on the map at all, Jason, but essentially the, the long-term goal is that there'll be a right-of-way for Three Rivers Land Trust to come into this piece of land, which is actually on a relatively large mountain. And they're gonna be able to have trails up in this area. And they're gonna have a nice overview of like Square Pond and stuff and probably be able to have some good picnic areas. They'll be able to access it from the parking lot that they have for the Goat Hill Preserve, which is right on the H Road. So cars will be able to park at that same parking lot. And you'll be able to cross the street and take a trail across our property to get to this 93-acre parcel. And eventually, Three Rivers is looking to try to connect this parcel to their parcel further up on Hanson Pond. And we're gonna help them get trails through our property so that they're able to do that in the future, which we're pretty excited about. We wanna continue to let this property be available for recreation. And that's how we've acted at all of our gravel pits in the past. We want people to go out there, go hiking, fishing. We want snowmobiles out there. We've already reached out to the Mousen Valley Snowmobile Association. And they're gonna work with us, and we're gonna continue to have all the same trails and access points in the gravel pit for the snowmobile use. ATVs, we'll probably have to think about that a little bit, but we can make it work. So this is gonna be a low impact on this piece of property. We bought it knowing that we would be, knowing the rules around these operations and what the rules in Acton kind of allow for. And this was the best use for our business. If there was someone else who potentially bought this land, you know, they might consider putting houses in back here or doing other things. We're not looking to do that. We have no intention of doing that. We just wanna kinda take the materials out to help out our business. And I know one thing that everybody wants to talk about here probably is traffic. That's a big thing that people get concerned about. All the traffic that accesses this location is gonna come in from the H Road, and it's not gonna come from West Shore Drive. We did have a traffic engineer do a study on both the West Shore Drive and the H Road. And those studies are available to the public, but the engineer basically said that the H Road was the right alternative to have one entrance going into this location. And that West Shore Drive really wasn't the right answer. And, and we kinda knew that intuitively from the beginning. But we do have an engineer that, you know, certified that and gave us the best possible location on H Road to put an entrance in, gave us recommendations for signage and other safety things that we can do to make it sure that it's a safe entrance. And one thing that we've really been working with the planning board on a lot is, is worried about the summer community. We said on weekends, we will not be hauling at all in, in the summer months, June, July, and August. We will not be on the roads Saturdays or Sundays whatsoever. And we also agreed that during 4th of July weekend, and I believe it was Labor Day weekend, Labor Day week, that we would cut our truck traffic back to only five trucks per day. So those were agreements that we made with the board to alleviate concerns about traffic being around when we have those busy summer weekends, long weekends. So we're here to work with the board, and we're not gonna have a crazy amount of traffic in general. We're looking to have about 50 trips per day enter this location. And that can sound like a scary number. In actuality, we're probably gonna have like 10 or 20 trips per day, but we have to try to get approved for a little bit more in case we get the opportunity to get a job in this area that we wanna do to help out with a project. So we're shooting for about 50 trucks per day, and that would be coming in from the H Road. And we have absolutely no intention of ever going out through West Shore Drive. We do have some pretty good things, things that we did voluntarily that we think are really gonna help out here with noise, dust, other concerns. One example is that we've volunteered to put in a berm all along West Shore Drive where we will be taking material out. And that berm's gonna be about 20 feet tall, and it's gonna be a vegetated berm, so it's gonna be green. You're not, you're not gonna, if you're walking down West Shore Drive, you're probably not gonna see it no matter what because we have to be 100 feet away. But this berm's gonna make it so that you really don't see us and you really don't hear us. And we're gonna be putting that berm along West Shore Drive. Eventually, that berm will come down when we're done activity out there, but it'll be up. And honestly, from our experience with these operations, like as far as noise go, goes, we will be down in like a deep depression in the gravel pit operating. We really don't think that the noise is gonna travel much where we're, we're gonna be operating, but the berm is just an extra thing that'll really alleviate any concerns about that. We also wanna do similar to what my grandfather did back in the past, and we wanna plant pine trees all along the border with West Shore Drive. We've got that in the reclamation plan right now. We would do like a 10 by 10 grid of like pine tree saplings so that eventually we get forest back in a lot of these areas. And we're gonna do the same along the H Road. Anywhere, there's not a crazy amount of areas, but where we're closer to the road, we're gonna, we're gonna be planting pine trees behind us. So we feel like we're, we've been working with the board for over a year now, and we think there's been some really good give and take, and that we've got a really solid application before everyone here tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions along the way. Is that all set? Would it be helpful for me to kinda highlight a few things?
Yeah. I have no idea where you're digging, and I have no idea where the road is.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. So if you're looking at the plans, you're coming up the H Road right here.
Yeah.
And do you know where Landscape Depot is? It's, uh, Landscape Depot?
Yeah.
So our entrance is gonna be right across the street from Landscape Depot. It's, it's, it's right where their trucks come in and out of that gravel pit right there. What's the road that goes down to Grady?
Lakeside Drive.
Lakeside Drive, okay.
Can you show us where Lakeside Drive is?
Yeah, that would be, I'm thinking, oh, actually, probably down a little bit, right?
That's Lakeside Drive right there.
This is Lakeside Drive. So the entrance is before that on the right-hand side. And so this is where we'll come in, and then we're gonna have a little maintenance garage right here, which is gonna be like a two or three bay garage, just where we can park equipment in the winter, do like some oil changes, simple things like that. We're not gonna be storing a lot of fuel on this site at all. We're gonna, we'll be able to come down this way, and this will be one area here where we'll be digging. This is about a 10-acre parcel. So this will be one area where we found the right gravel materials that, you know, work for us. This is about a 10-acre area that's along the H Road. And then this bigger circular area right here is a 93-acre parcel that we're gonna be giving over to the land trust. So this is the land trust piece. They will have a right-of-way coming from H Road. You'll see it as this dashed roadway right here. They'll be coming in from the H Road. There's a, for those familiar with the road, there's a red gate right here, which is about the approximate location of where they'll be coming in. From that red gate, they'll have a right-of-way to get out to the, to this 93-acre parcel. And then we wanna also help them grab, get a trail from there through the property so that they can get up further to Hanson Pond down the road. But to explain further, the, when we come in the entrance, we're, we'll be coming down this road. We're designating this as a small processing area. This is where like we would have like probably our screening plant and like some of our processing equipment because it's really out in the middle of nowhere over here. It's very far away from both roadways. It'll have low impact. This will be a bit of a processing area here, and then the other areas where we're intending on taking materials out are here. And then crossing the stream and in this area as well. So this is, total, this is about 83 acres between this piece, this piece, and the piece near the H Road. And again, the parcel is closer to 500 acres, though. This is a, we have Red Gate Road up on our north right here. We're still gonna allow snowmobile access as it always has. There's been a snowmobile trail that's come, you can see it dotted here. You know, if a developer came in, they would, they might try to put a road in through here. And they might try to connect West Shore Drive to the H Road. We don't wanna do that. We just wanna let the snowmobiles come through here. That's it. Hikers, bikers. So these trails are gonna stay intact and, and the trails, for those of you who are familiar with the trails out here, those, these are the, the yellow lines that we're seeing, our existing trails that are out on the site.
There's Canada, we're in. Get 4.
Yeah. There was actually a pit. They used this area right here, they dug here years back, and they used that to build the H Road. And you, and you can see where they were digging there. And there was also, there's also a big open area right here where it looks like there was some digging as well.
Yeah, that's where the job comes across. We, Chris, we have one down here.
Sir, we gotta wait for these.
Oh, okay.
Right, that, this is, if you're coming from square, there's like a, a pretty big open area right here where you can tell that they had, there was definitely some digging that had happened in the past. But the rest of the property, I mean, to the, to the south, this is all staying privately owned. And one thing I really did wanna emphasize is that my parents live in Acton, my brother lives in Acton, they both live on West Shore Drive, and they're, uh, my brother's set back from the lake, my parents are on the lake, and we have, we have a vested interest in this community. We're not just a, a big company coming from out of state. We really do care about this community, and we care about the people in this community. And I grew up here all my life, and we have, we have no intention of trying to upset anyone or anger anyone. And our phone is always on. If there's ever a concern, you can call us directly, you can call me, you can call the office, you can call my dad, you can go knock on his door, and we will address it right away. And I, I really wanna assure you of that. That's how we've always operated at our gravel pit in Sanford, which is, it's, we call it the Agway Pit. It's right next to the old Agway store. And there's a lot more neighbors right there, and they're surrounding us. And we haven't had a complaint out there, I'm pretty proud to say, we haven't had a complaint out there for over 10 years. So I think that's a pretty big deal. It, it shows that we can be, even when we are close to people and we're, we're close to people, we can operate these gravel pits in a way that doesn't impact, really doesn't impact you at all. So. Is there a, an image of, like an overall image of the whole property?
Not on the plans that you've done on this one. Oh, I li, I lied.
So this is the, this is kind of the whole property, and it'd be Rudy Peppin's pit would be kind of right in this area right here where Rudy is, and the culvert's kind of in this area. And then you come further up, and this whole piece right here is gonna remain privately owned by, by dad. He's, he's gonna keep this, this isn't gonna have anything to do with mineral extraction or anything like that. This is just gonna stay quiet. This whole piece is gonna be land trust. And then the piece that we're looking to do is here, which is, you know, where we found the material that we need for the company. And altogether, we think that the impact on the total site is, is, is very low, so. Is there anything you guys think that I should point out in addition to this?
Reclamation.
Reclamation. Reclaiming the site is a requirement, and one thing I'll say is that we, we have inspections, we can have inspections from the town, we have inspections regularly from the DEP, and we also have inspections from Mine Safety Health Administration. So we regularly have federal inspectors, state inspectors, town inspectors coming out and checking on us and making sure that we're following the rules. We can't just do whatever we want out there. So with the DEP, we're gonna, we'll be bonded with the DEP and will also be bonded with the town. And what that means is that if anything went sour and the company failed for some reason, and we deserted the property, the town will have the money and the state will have the money. It's almost like a double insurance policy. They're both gonna have the money certified by the bank to say, "We can come in and clean up this site, and we can reclaim the whole site and do what they were supposed to do." So we will be bonded with our bank, through our bank, with both the state and the town. And that should be some good peace of mind, knowing that no one's gonna, no one's just gonna abandon this site and leave it a, a big wreck or anything like that. There's gonna be money there to come in and clean it up. As far as reclamation goes, we, it's gonna be grassland. We're gonna, we're gonna plant like grass across most of the property. It'll be a lot of fields, but we're also gonna do a lot with pine trees. And we're, we're kinda working with the planning board on, you know, more specifically what they wanna see out there, so. So we're excited to get some comments, I guess?
All right.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Thank you for the lead.
All right, we'll first start off with two emails that came in from, to the code officer. He's gonna read those, and then any comments that you could, you know, face the board once again and, you know, and be civil about it.
If anyone has any questions after tonight, too, and they wanna reach out to me with any questions about anything I said, please give me a call, so.
Just to your emails, not mine.
This is the planning board's job, not mine. Yeah.
You don't want it?
No. Pat's gonna take over.
Uh, let's see. 123022, Donna Garvin. I'm a resident on lot number 29 on H Road, Acton. I'd like to express my opinion on this proposed project. I feel this project would be very detrimental to this area with noise, dust, constant vehicle movement on this secondary road, not to mention danger to walkers, bikers, children, and wildlife. This is a reasonably quiet area with residents enjoying the woods and lake. I'm not in favor of this project going forward. Respectfully submitted, Donna L. Garvin, 1587 H Road. 1230, Joyce Merengi. Dear Jason, thank you in advance for reading this letter about our concerns regarding the project above. Number one, safety concerns. The H Road is already overburdened by truck traffic from other pits on the H Road. The trucks speed and create, and create a safety hazard. There are children that live on the H Road. There are many children that visit in the summer. H Road is used for recreation. People are walking dogs, biking, and running. The wind generated by speeding trucks almost knocks people over. There's a considerable dust from trucks. One feels the need to move over on the shoulder when a speeding big truck comes barreling towards you. There does not seem to be adequate police resources to patrol the road. We do not see the speed limits enforced at all. Perhaps the speed limits on the road are antiquated and do not meet the needs of the current residents and the increase of development and population that now exists in the area. Number two, air noise and pollution. The odor from the diesel engines along with the fumes from the other equipment pollutes the air. There's already noise from the Landscape Depot across the street from this site. Number three, destruction of natural beauty and its wildlife habitat. In the last few years, Acton's done a great job in protecting and creating open land for community use. Goat Hill, Mary Grant Preserve, and Hanson Pond Preserve are greatly appreciated by all visitors. These projects have added value to Acton as a town in Southern Maine that people regard as desirable with natural beauty. The proliferation, proliferation of pits that ravage the land make the town less desirable place to live or relocate. The destruction of wildlife's habitat negatively affects us all. Many people who buy homes in Acton are attracted to living amongst the wildlife. They enjoy hunting, fishing, bird watching, et cetera. The pits negatively infect, impact the town. Couldn't there be another use for these types of lots? Number four, potentially this pit could lead to flooding. If there was a major storm like Hurricane Irene, the culverts on the side of the road might not be able to handle the additional water, causing flooding. Number five, there are, there are already too many pits on H Road and Route 109. There are old pits that have never been reclaimed. Are there adequate resources to monitor new and old pits enforcing state and local codes? Thank you for hearing our concerns. Sincerely, Joyce Merengi and Susan Dean. That's it.
All right, we'll open it up to a public comment. If you can come up to the podium and state your name, and you got five minutes to any comments or questions.
I'll get it started.
Yeah, I was waiting.
It's all with me.
Yeah. We missed you, by the way.
I wanna stop by saying that I've been watching the planning board meeting, and for this to take as long as it has, to get this process done historically, this is unbelievable it's taken this long to get through this process. The Peppins have bent over backwards with the planning board, uh, to try to accommodate everything that's been brought forward to them. And for somebody like me that hauled gravel out of that pit you, that they were talking about, the old pit off the H Road up there, I was one of the people that hauled out of that pit, so I know it very well. Historically, Peppins have done an amazing job of this town. We wouldn't have the amount of property that we have now for public use if it wasn't for the donations that they made in the past. It's kinda like Matt said, down to West Shore Drive, when they bought that property from Kobe Ricka many years ago, it, it hasn't been a negative impact on the community by any stretch of your imagination. And I've, I've watched about some of the setbacks from streams and wetlands and things like that. I mean, our ordinance really clearly says that you need to be 75 feet from a stream. And the planning board has asked them to be 100, which you can ask, but if they're following our ordinances, that in reality, that's all they really have to do. Because you can't put restrictions on something higher than what our local law is or the state law is. You can ask them to change it, but I know that they don't have to. You can ask them to change it, but I know that they don't have to change it. And if they're willing to stay the 100 feet instead of the 75 feet, I think that's a positive on their part and I'm glad they're willing to do it. And the other thing that I observed was the fee for reclaiming the property. Watching the meetings, there's been different numbers have been put out there. There is a difference between the piece of property that they're running their operations on and what they're excavating for material. And it's my opinion of my experience that the only thing you can charge for is where they're doing the mineral extraction. It's part of the fee for reclaiming. And I've heard $4,000 to $6,000 per acre from the planning board meetings. And it's also my understanding, and I see the slotmen have this now. The slotmen are the ones that set the fees and they have to approve the fees before you can charge the fees. So if the last time the fees were set and if it was $2,000 an acre, for example, that Mahoy was charged, you can't change that fee in mid-process for the next applicant. I mean, they've been, it's been over a year since they started this. And you can, the slotmen can change the fees for future operations. But in the middle of this one here, there's quite a dollar amount difference in what they would be asked to put forward from the $2,000 that was charged at the last operation to this one. And again, I want to applaud the Peppins for what they've done. I mean, there's other mineral extractions in this town going on. They're not even been in front of the planning board. And they're extracting thousands of yards and leaving with it. And with no supervision and no, we all know who they are and where they are. And I just want to take my hat off the Peppins and they've got a lot more patience than I would have. I would have probably been up there operating a year ago and said, "See you in court." I'll do whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Maloney, H Road. Question on the reclamation plan?
Please say.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Does that happen after everything is done, after the 30 years, or when does that happen? The planting, the saplings and everything else?
Once they leave the pit. They're done extracting.
So they're allowed to open up a certain amount of acres. Once they, once they need to, once they, say they have 10 acres. Once they, they mine that 10 acres and they need to move on to the next 10 acres, that 10 acres need to be reclaimed as they're moving, as they're going forward. So it's not, so it doesn't stay open and then you have 80 acres of open gravel pit. It's, it goes in stages.
Got it. Thanks. I didn't hear anything about the noise impact. Like, was there a study done for the decibel level of the crushing activity? Because I know living on the second, in the second basin, in the fall, when everybody can do their crushing, it's loud and the trees are, the leaves are off the trees and it just echoes. And it's, it's annoying. So I'm just wondering what the study was here for the decibel level of the crushing operation?
They presented us, presented us with some, the decibel levels of the machines that they're going to be using. I don't have that information off the top of my head or in front of me right now. I just, but they did present us with stuff.
So is there like an acceptable level at the planning board?
Yes, there is.
And where, like what distance is that acceptable level measured at?
The boundaries.
Yeah.
The boundaries.
The boundaries of the property?
50 decibels.
50 decibels at the end of the property? I don't know what 50 decibels is. I guess I'd have to find that out. So no other concerns or other property managers on the decibel level in the?
There's always concerns, but just. Uh, when she's done.
Yeah, when she's done.
Okay, I'm done.
Just to help you a little bit?
Sure.
Dave, come up here.
To help you a little bit with that question?
Yes.
One of the most important questions. In this situation, they're all different.
Yeah.
If you go down the H Road where we will be set up to crush it,
Yeah.
we are behind about a 90-foot bank.
Okay.
Because of that, it's not going to go this way, it's going to go that way. And what we also did down the other end of West Shore to protect that,
Yeah.
we are digging down low, but we're not going to crush there. We're going to help everyone on West Shore, we're going to go to where that big bank is because we want to keep it, we're going to follow every state rule of decimals. But we're going to be much better because of where we're going to do it. And that, but we're going to be under, which they will come in test as the state of mind comes into all of our gravel pits.
Yeah.
They test the decimals every year. And at any time, anybody complain about the decimals, then they will show up. So we are under all those laws.
Can you show us on that other map with that 90-foot banking?
I love, I'm saying that it's big, it might be 80.
You want to use the laser pointer again? Quit on you.
That's work, isn't it?
Push the little button. Batteries might have gone down.
That 90-foot banking is here along the H Road and the roadway kind of comes in from here. So my dad's saying that we'll be set up right here in a fairly large hole and there'll be a massive banking right here that is going to prevent that sound really from going out towards the H Road at all. It's going to bounce backwards this way.
Is that where the crushers are?
There would be a crusher probably set up here at some point, yes. As I mentioned up here, we intend on setting the crusher up in this area, which is in the very middle of the property. And it's very far away from the H Road, or sorry, West Shore Drive. So we'll be set up like essentially in a hole either, I would say either here or we'll be up in this area right here. But we're not going to be very close to the roadway. And we do have to meet that 50-decibel noise limit. A lawnmower, if you, a lawnmower, if there's a lawnmower that was running over there at the back of the room, the very back of this room, that would be what about 50 decibels is. It's like the faint sound of a lawnmower, if I can try to give you an idea of what that noise level is. But we're going to be below that. I don't even think we're going to come close to 50 decibels.
Another thing that we do too, we kept in our gravel pit, one time somebody complained. We were still under it, so we didn't have to do anything. But because they complained that way, so we can do it more. We made two by two by eight blocks, we made hundreds of them. And what we did that way, in the neighborhood, we like blocks, is you know, we put blocks all the way around it really high so it wouldn't go that way. We're here, we're not here to make noise, we get, we live there also. And where we're going to be behind the bank is great. But the other place where he's going to put it, it's not traveling one way, even though it's long distance. We've done it, you know, a pit we're in right now and we have the blocks. We have hundreds of them right now and we can set them up and dead. And that's what we've done, we even put foam inside it to keep the noise even lower than what it is. Because that's.
And we even think about where we put our aggregate stockpiles. We can take a big pile of sand and we can put that right where the crusher is and that will help block the noise if there's an issue. So we got a lot of different things we can do and one thing I wanted to bring up too is we voluntarily decided with the planning board that we're going to install these silent backup alarms into our dump trucks and into our loaders on site. So one other, one other sound you might hear from a gravel pit is that beep, beep, beep. You know, the truck's backing up. We found these OSHA compliant silent backup alarms. They put out a high-frequency pitch and they're completely safety certified, but they don't put out that like high-frequency sound that you might hear from that sort of stuff. So we have said right in our, in our plans that we're, all our equipment's going to have all that, those backup alarms as well.
I'm just curious, how many pits do we already have on the H Road? And how many trucks are each one per day allowed? I drive the H Road every day almost and I, pardon?
You state your name.
Pardon?
You state your name.
Oh, Cindy Hart, Abbott Road. I drive the H Road every day. There's never a time I don't see a dump truck during the day, except when it was snowing that one time. I'm concerned about the impact on the roads and who's going to pay for it. Because when I looked at what the taxes that are paid by these pits, they're very low compared to homes. And I don't see how, when I added up all the big pits and what they pay for taxes to the town, I don't believe they'd pave a quarter mile of the H Road. So I would like you to look into that and see if we can somehow monetize this so that the town isn't losing money every time a truck rolls down that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Del Rossi. One of my concerns is like, it's hard to read the map from where I'm looking at and where it is along West Shore Drive and how far down it goes down to West Shore Drive. I kind of got a view of it before, so is this like basic, from the last map, is this like, kind of like from Willow Street all the way down?
Yes.
No.
Look at the end, there's a call that's at the end of West Shore Drive. Put it in perspective.
Yeah, we'll show them in a minute.
Oh yeah, okay. I can see West Shore Drive there.
So the extraction, extraction goes from here to here.
Okay.
And then on this side over here. So Willow Street, uh, oh, it's over here.
Yeah.
So no.
Okay.
Yeah, it is pretty far away from Willow Street.
All right, no, I would, when I was seeing the, the whole lake, it looked like you were just riding West Shore Drive the entire way. I'm like, wow, that's in everybody's backyard along the whole way. So how is the process of digging? Is it blasting or is it just machinery with like backhoes and excavators?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of the people are taking a ride to the main.
Yeah. Dave, can you go down the river?
Yeah, I, oh, yeah, I looked right by it. So what Matt claims are doing right at the beginning when we start,
Yeah.
is he's going to go down 30 feet. So now there's already going to be a 30-foot buffer by West Shore, which is tremendous. He's going to build another 20. And I'm just saying, definitely 20, but the same 30, it might be 28. But he's going to dig a hole in the ground 28 feet. Then he's going to take the ground in 28 feet and heat it 28 over that way. So that you've got a 28-foot buffer to protect the noise up the road and he's going to put another 20-foot one on top of that. We're already going to be way under the compliances, but by doing those two things, it's going to put us a lot more under the compliances. And to answer the lady, lady question back, people don't realize we pay a large, large impact with all that crap. It's incredible what we pay to put off-road in our trucks to repair all the roads and do all that. We won't, and we won't be paid a humongous tax to any truck that goes on the road to repair all the roads. And people don't understand that what we do, they, we get hit very hard for, and the tax wise, we invite you for our on-road trucks.
I understand that.
And I understand what you said, so I'm good there.
Okay.
Hi, Joyce Backshee, former also planning board chair and member, which some of you know, we've been a long time together. I'd just like some clarification. Well, Gavin knows me, so, you know, I will pull out my phone and look things up all the time. The average lawnmower decibels are between 85 and 100 decibels if it's a gasoline lawnmower. So they're safely going to be in that number. But my question is, the allowance, and we know other pits in town, are 50 trucks. I think it can be explained that that doesn't mean there are going to be 50 trucks going in and out every single, it's trips, I believe. Is that right? Maybe you could explain that, making it a little clearer?
It's trucks.
It's?
So 100 trips, one truck, one, and then back.
Right.
So it's 100, it's 50 trucks, not 50, not 25 and then 25.
Right, right. But in a day, a truck is, depending on where they're going, one truck might get two trips out of it, maybe three, but maybe that's something you could explain. And I know one of my neighbors had a question about the berm that you're talking about on West Shore. And just, just for reference, my neighbor lives in the last house on West Shore and if you count back six, that's where I live. So we are very vested and, you know, we have been on, if anybody wants to go on a ride with Dave and it's four by four, I don't know, he's quite a driver and I think. I've been in it and he will take you there and you can see it where they're talking about digging holes down. But just a better idea of, I know because I've been there that the holes that you're going to dig down are deep to start with. But you're, so you're going to have, you know, a hole this deep and then you're going to put a berm. That berm is going to be 100 feet from the road? What, okay, maybe you could just, you know, on the trucks and that, you could just go through it here.
So in, in average day for us, we have about four trucks. We have two triaxle dump trucks and we have two trailers. And that's the most amount of trucks that we have. Those trucks can probably only do about five trips a day to our Sanford location over here. So on average, I'd say there'd probably be about 20 trips per day, which is 40 total trips down the H Road. Like I said, we're trying to get approved for a little bit more truck traffic in case we get an opportunity for a job or, you know, they're trying to build a road up in this area or there's some sort of construction project going on that we want to get involved with. One good thing is that we will have some small private sales if people want to come in and buy some crushed stone or this or that. This should prevent people from having to drive all the way down the H Road and going way down to the other end of H Road to go to the gravel pits that are down there. They're going to go to the one that's closer. So this should help prevent, it should make less traffic actually for the further end of H Road, in my opinion. Going back to the berms, the first thing that we'll do on site is we'll cut the trees down. Then we will remove the loom. We'll take that loom and we'll build the berms with the loom. So the loom will be right there and it'll vegetate very quickly. There'll be shrubs, there'll be bushes growing out of it. And that berm will be all along the West Shore Drive. And if you look at West Shore Drive, there's actually probably only two or three houses that we're going to be directly abutting, which isn't a lot. All the rest of the houses are across the road. So if you add the width of the road and you add the width of the shoulders and you add the width of the buffer, you're really talking about like 250 feet. There's really only about three houses on West Shore Drive that will be within about 100 feet. So the berm is an extra precaution and that loom stays right there, which is peace of mind for everybody. We're not going to take that loom and sell it. We're going to, we are required to keep that loom on site so that we can reclaim as we go. And to kind of answer one of those questions from before, we can't just open up this whole site and do whatever we want. We can only open up about 30 acres at a time and then we can't go anywhere over that. And with Google Earth and all this stuff nowadays, it's not hard to tell if we're breaking the rules. You can go right on the internet and you can look at what we're doing and you can say, "Hey, they're over 30 acres, what are they doing?" So we got to follow the rules and we can only open up a certain amount at a time. We have to fully reclaim the acreage behind us as we go. And that means that we have to have, they say it's a 95% vegetative standard, where there's 95% growth in that area and it is green. So I hope that answered.
Build it, build back in or is it just a big hole that's going to get, you grow vegetation?
vegetation?
So it's, it's, it is a depressed hole afterwards, it's not filled back in. What's good about it is that, there was one comment that, oh, this operation might flood the roadway. The whole gravel pit is designed to be internally drained, so all the water pitches into that hole. You're digging yourself into a hole, and when it rains, if you get a catastrophic flood, that hole's going to, it's going to fill up a bit, but it's going to drain right through that soil very quickly. And if anything, it's not going to have a path to get over to West Shore Drive. If there's a catastrophic storm, it's going to stay in that gravel pit. Because, as I said, these pits are designed to be internally drained so that you do not have a lot of, any erosion or any runoff from this gravel pit going towards those ditches on West Shore Drive. You know, of course, when you're doing excavation initially, there, you got to, you got to do all the right procedures. You got to put up silt fence, you got to make sure that none of those, none of that loom or soil, you know, is, is going over towards West Shore Drive, because that would not be good for the lake, it wouldn't be good for anybody. But once you get established, which doesn't take long, you're in a big hole, and it's an internally drained hole, and everything stays right in there. And we have to build slopes on those holes, and those slopes are three to one, so they're very gradual slopes that come down into the base of the hole. Very gradual slopes, and they really kind of become, like, in the end, they become recreational areas, you can, people can use them. It's honestly probably going to become public land at some point, I hope, so. Are there any other questions while I'm...
Will the land be clear cut? Is there a logging company involved in this?
This land was owned by a logger before we bought it, and he did a lot of cutting out there before we, before we got the property. Yes, in the 85 acres that we plan on developing, there will be some tree cutting to be able to do that. But in the rest of the property, we want to set it up so that it's in a management plan with a registered, like, forester. We've done that in the past where a forester will actually have set up a management plan for the rest of the property. And we, that, that property is essentially in tree growth. So we're not intending on clear cutting the rest of the property. We're just going to do like some sort of management plan with a forester so that possibly over time we do a little bit of select cutting in other areas, but I can probably assure you that the land trust is not going to be clear cutting their, their piece either, so.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Bernard Broder, East Shore Drive. First, I want to say, as a former Planning Board member, this Planning Board, as to the perception that this has gone slowly, or the board's been unreasonable, or delayed, I say baloney. There were months where, when I was on this board, we waited for something as simple as an application that correctly stated who the applicants were. And we asked, and we asked, and we asked, and the applicant was allowed to appear before the board multiple times and do presentations when they hadn't even submitted a proper app yet. So I really disagree with that, and frankly, I find it disrespectful and offensive to the board. On that note, I looked in the file today, and I'm not sure that it is complete as is. And the thing that I noticed was, the insurance certificate that's on file was not issued to the town of Acton, it's issued to the town of Newfield, but more importantly, I don't believe the insured entities on that application track with the applicants for this conditional use permit. Now, I understand the Peppins own multiple LLCs and companies and so forth, so do I. I own four. But my insurance on one doesn't cover the others. So it may seem like a picky point, but it's an important point. Are the entities that are going to operate this insured by the Peppins' various carriers? You know, something I want to say too is, I hope, and frankly, I trust, from the work that the board has done so far, that this project is judged on the merits of the project, not on the carrots that are held out as promises, some of which have already dissolved or changed, and not on the threats of the stick of what happens if you don't grant this. Now, I suspect that this is less a question about whether or not this project will happen than it is how it will happen. And I think that that is what you're here for, you know, to make sure that if this happens, which I think it will, it happens in the best interest of the town and within the ordinances. The other thing I wanted to respond to was the relationship that the Peppins have or don't have with Sanford. And, you know, I'm a nice guy, ask me, I'll tell you, is basically it. If you want to explore that, do your homework. I'm saying that to everyone, not just the board, you know? Ask the Planning Board in Sanford what their experience has been. Ask the city officials in Sanford. Google this, see what the landowners in Sanford have experienced and the concerns they've expressed. Do your own research. Okay. I noticed that a study was done, a roadway traffic and safety analysis. Two concerns, this applies to any of the studies that have been done. I don't understand why it appears to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that the client is the Peppins instead of the town. I think, I know that applicants are required to pay for these studies, but I question the neutrality of them when the client is the applicant instead of the town. This study, if I remember correctly, of the H Road was done in November of 2022. I don't see anywhere where it contemplates current traffic volume on the road, especially summer volume increases. I didn't see where it delved into how many other entities on the H Road have conditional use permits and how many trucks they're allowed to use. So it's one thing to say, you know, with some marking, this road is safe for these large commercial vehicles and for up to 50 a day, but I think it's quite another analysis if you already have 100 on the road from other entities. And I would suggest that some of that data could, could be obtained and run by the consultant in terms of, we know how many summer residents we have in Acton, we know how many properties on the H Road in the area that involves, we know how many conditional permits are issued, and how many vehicles they're allowed to have, and so forth. One of the restrictions I noticed that the applicants have agreed to are on when traffic can enter and leave the pit. What I didn't see was any restriction on them operating the pit during those hours. Now, maybe that's not a concern, but arguably, if neighbors are concerned about noise and dust and so forth, the operation can still go on during those hours. I want to talk for a second on vernal pools, because that issue has also come up, and once again, there's a study that's been done on the vernal pools on the property, and by all appearances, there's been communication between the applicant and the entities that did the studies and/or the state, especially with regard to one particular pool, whether or not it's to be counted as a vernal pool or not. And I think that, and I have to say, I did a little education for myself on the importance of vernal pools, as they relate to rare species in particular. So, and there are different definitions by state as to what constitutes a vernal pool. For example, in New Jersey, their conservation department indicates that a vernal pool can be either man-made, man-created, or natural, in nature. So I looked at mains, because the, what's being suggested to you is that this vernal pool in particular that's come into question has at least some basis in man-made, being man-made by digging and so forth, which doesn't necessarily mean there was no natural basis either, but let's say that, that it is all man-made. So the main department of inland fisheries and wildlife defines vernal pools as naturally occurring, seasonal to permanent bodies of water, occurring in shallow depressions that fill during the spring and fall and may dry during the summer. My point with that is, the way I read that, is what makes it a vernal pool is the natural, naturally occurring, seasonal to permanent body of water, not how that was created within the landscape. It's the water. It's the seasonal to permanent body of water that is protected because of the species that inhabit it versus how it was created. So, you know, if you pave a driveway, and, well, that's probably not the best example, but I guess I've made my point on that. This is not about, in my view, being a tree hugger or overly protective, it's, we're protecting the habitation of that water that is seasonal in nature versus how it was created. So I would like to know about...
Bernard, I'm going to have to cut you off for your five minutes.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Come back.
I'll be quick. My name's Isaac Peppin, Matt's brother. Been up here a bunch of times, obviously. The gentleman just up here was just talking about how he wants us to not be decided on a motion of the town and the code and all that. He wants it to be done judicially and fairly and what's actually in the code and by law. We agree. That's what we want too. We're doing everything legally, we're doing everything right. If that's how he wants it, then this should be a no-brainer. He also wrote that, or mentioned that, you know, is it fair that the applicant's paying for the traffic studies and things like that and such? Hey, if the town wants to pay for it, we're fine with that too. Doesn't bother us any at all. But my point is that we're willing to do these things, we're willing to work with the town, we're willing to do the extra steps. I mean, you know, the, the extra berms, the extra piles, the extra safety and things like that, these are things that we're willing to do to work with the town. And the number one reason is, we want the town to benefit from this, just as much as we're going to end up benefiting from it. And the other reason is that, we're locals, we're from here. I live on West Shore Drive, I grew up riding my dirt bike, my four-wheeler, my snowmobile on this land. I hunted this land all year this year, loved it, explored it all over the place, I know it pretty well now. You know, I look forward to my kids growing up and working on, playing on this land and hanging out. And, you know, we're, my point is that we're local, we're here, we want to enjoy this land, we don't want to ruin it. We're not some big rich company from Massachusetts coming in here that's just going to strip it and piss off all the neighbors and ruin it for everyone else. We're donating a big piece of it, we want it to stay natural, beautiful, you know? We will be extracting in a small part of it, but we're going to be going above and beyond to make sure the town's happy, make sure the rest of the land is usable and, you know, stays nice and usable for everyone around. If anyone has any concerns or questions, again, we've, my dad's gone above and beyond, he's taken people out there in a side-by-side, he's shown them personally what they're doing wrong, or not what they're doing wrong, but what is going to be going on out there, what we're going to be doing. So if anyone has any questions like that, I mean, whether this, you know, whether it's now or after it gets approved, or after we're out there digging or anything, if you have questions, concerns, comments, we hope that you'd come right to us, knock on our door, call us at the office, say, hey, I'm concerned about this, I got a couple of questions, you think you can take me out and explain it to me, you can show it to me, think we can do something to correct it? We're more than willing to work with everyone and make it beneficial for everyone. So, thank you.
We'll have the operations, you're going to be doing the digging and everything?
Uh, we'll be pulling gravel, pulling sand and stone.
All night?
Will you pop to the microphone, please, so everybody can hear you?
Um, no, not, not all night, no. There's, there's enforcement out there, you know, generally can't start until, and Matt's better to answer these questions, but generally you can't start until at least seven. You know, crush, you know, we start like a screener and loader around seven. Generally, a crusher, we wouldn't start till later in the day, nine o'clock. That wouldn't be year-round, and, you know, it would never run past three, four o'clock in the afternoon. So, Matt can answer.
Can you repeat the question?
Uh, just concerned about the hours of operation of excavating, you know, he answered the question about the pressure, what about excavation?
So the current hours of operation are stated as, it is 6:00 AM to 5:00, I believe, that's Monday through Friday. From 6:00 to 7:00, we're not allowed to do any processing on site or any excavation on site. The only thing we're allowed to do for that first hour is we can plow the roads in the morning if we need to do that. We can go down and just do like maintenance on the equipment, like greasing the equipment, you know, kind of other stuff related to that. And then we do have it written that at 6:30, we'd like a few of our trucks to be able to come into the location just so that we can load those trucks. So from 6:30 to 7:00, we'll have a few, only Peppin-owned trucks are allowed in at that time, no other trucks. We would load those trucks so that they can get loaded and go back to the, to our location in Sanford. And screening cannot start until 7:00. A screening plant is not super loud. A crusher is really the thing that's louder. The crusher cannot start until 8:00. And we're not allowed to do, as far as I know, we're not allowed to do any crushing or screening on the weekends. We are looking to be open Saturdays, like to be down there, just working down there from, again, from like 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturdays, but we will not be doing any screening or crushing on the weekends. No Sundays at all, no holidays at all. And as I mentioned, like, we've really, with the traffic, we've really worked with the board a lot to make sure that during, like, we're not allowed to have any truck traffic the weekends at all, in the summertime that is. And one of the big concerns was the transfer station, because there's a lot of traffic there on the weekends that's going a mile down the road, and we didn't want the tight interference of the vehicles, you know, especially with that going on. So in the summertime, we can't have any trucks. And if, while I have the chance, I would like to maybe address a few of those other comments that I heard. We do have a really great relationship with the town of Sanford. We've worked with the town a lot over the years, we're working with them on the mineral extraction ordinance there to try to make it better for both businesses and for the town. And that's something that we're willing to do with the town of Acton in the future. If the town of Acton wants to work on their ordinance, we would love to get involved with that and be a part of that conversation. And that's something that we do in Sanford. The rules are way stricter in Sanford, and if we broke the rules, they would shut us down very quickly. So I can assure you that we're not. We have eight monitoring wells in Sanford, and we have to spend about $30,000 every year testing for 60 different parameters of groundwater quality. And those reports all go right to the town. They get, we've been doing that for eight years, we've never had one hit on any one of those reports. So we are not out here impacting the groundwater at all. We really aren't with this operation. We're only allowed to have 100-gallon fuel tank enter into the pit to help us fuel up our equipment. We are looking to have a larger storage tank, which is about 1,000 gallons, at the maintenance garage. But as far as driving down into the gravel pit, we can only have 100 gallons, that's it, to fuel up our equipment. So, and we have a full plan, that's a, we call it a spill prevention and control plan, and it's all about making sure that we're following the right procedures to make sure that nothing gets impacted out here. that nothing gets impacted out here. We do have a great relationship with them, and as far, as far as vernal pools go on this site, there's one vernal pool that we're impacting on this entire property. And you'll see that darkly shaded area towards the left right there? What the rules in Maine say about vernal pools is it's a 250-foot offset. In New Hampshire, it's a zero-foot offset. In Massachusetts, it's a 75-foot offset. Maine has the strictest rules in all of New England when it comes to vernal pools. They say 250 feet, but they do let you impact 25% of that buffer. So the only vernal pool impact that we have on this site is the 25% area, which is in the dark right there, where we will be developing near the vernal pool. But what's essential for a vernal pool is that the salamanders and the larvae that are in there can hatch, and then they have a way to exit out into the forest. And this provides for that, that that ecosystem can still work there, and then they can do their thing and make it out into the forest. So Maine has way stricter rules than everywhere when it comes to vernal pools. And the comment that I heard, the definition of a vernal pool is "natural." So, what the gentleman was talking about was, near the H Road, we have identified one other, what was considered a potential vernal pool. But it's not natural, because it wasn't naturally there. It was dug, there was a huge hole dug in the ground right there because they were mining. And that created like a small wetland area. So, you don't have to take my word for it. The state of Maine has, I had consultants from StanTech Engineering go out there and do all the observations on this, send a report to the DEP. The DEP verifies that that is not a significant vernal pool. So the accusation that we're trying to impact or destroy a significant vernal pool is completely false. And, you know, all the data is there, from all the scientists, and, you know, Bernard, you're a lawyer. I would think you'd kind of know that. This is, these are facts, okay? I'm not making this stuff up. We've hired, we've spent a lot of money with consultants, engineers. I have a civil engineering background, but I'm not doing this work. Civil engineers that we're hiring out of Portland, Maine are doing all this work. So, the facts and the data are there. And the only impact that we're having is a very small impact on one vernal pool on this site. There's probably over 20 vernal pools on this site, and we're not getting anywhere near any of those. So, that's how little of an impact it is on what we're looking at here.
Mr. Chair, given that there have been a couple of presentations in response to mine, first of all, on the issue of paying for studies, our ordinance provides that the planning board can require certain studies that are pertinent to the decision, and that the applicant is to pay for those studies. So I believe, yes, you have. But the point is not that, "Aren't they wonderful? They paid for these, and oh, and if you don't like it, you can pay for your own." The point is, that's the way the code reads, and that's all I said in that regard. As for, there's a difference between significant vernal pools and vernal pools in general. And I did not state that they were in any way proposing to breach a significant vernal pool. Yes, I'm a lawyer. Yes, I read the language, and yes, I read the language when I was up here the first time. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
I just wanted to-
Wait.
Will Langley, I just got one concern about your entrance there, coming right across from Landscaped Depot. I think you said, did you have it engineered, you said? So, and they think that's the best location there. So there's, we couldn't move it down the road at all, you know, 'cause my only concern is like, you pull out of the Landscaped Depot, you go right, you can see traffic pretty good coming both ways, but, you know, maybe in your instance, coming out, going to the left there, you know, you're not gonna be able to see those cars coming down the hill, and we all know, nobody goes a speed limit on that road. So, I mean, you know, when you guys get going, I'm willing to help you out. If we gotta, some of them trees are in the town, right away, we'll prune them up, you know, I just want, I get kinda nervous, there's a bus stop right there and whatnot, so I'm just, I just, I don't want no problems there. We haven't had any problems there, so I can help you guys out if we need to, when time comes. And I've done it before for gravel pit owners, if the stuff's in the right of way, I'll, we'll take care of it. So, but I just wanna make sure everybody's safe on that road, that's all.
Dan Hebert, 54 and 55 Red Gate Lane. I think overall, a lot of due diligence has been done, and a lot of conditions have been put on that seem good. My only two concerns are noise transmission, which it sounds like that has been thought of. And the noise transmission I'm most concerned about is going to the left of this plan. You can see that there's a lot of house lots on-
Can you get closer to the mic?
Yep. So, my two concerns are, first, noise transmission. Sounds like a lot of work's been done on that already, but my concern for noise transmission is to the left, on Great East Pond, Great East Lake, the third basin there on the left side. Once it gets on the lake, you know, it just travels so fast, but it sounds like a lot of work has already been done on that. And my second and most major concern is, is traffic. It sounds like a lot of people have talked about it, it is real. It doesn't seem like H Road is wide enough, it just does not seem wide enough. So, myself, and my neighbors, and, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, my family and my kids and grandkids, we all have to exit Lakeside Drive, which is, comes out to H Road and is probably a couple hundred feet from the proposed entrance. I guess I would just note two things on that, that you kinda don't see on this plan, is when you're at that intersection, to your left, there's a curve and a swoop down from a hill. So, not only trucks, but all vehicles come pretty fast. And I think anybody who's been on that road, the hill from the other side is, is a pretty significant hill. People come down fast. So now you have three entrances there. You'll have Lakeside Drive, and you'll have the home, the landscaping depot, and the new entrance. So, I know Matt talked about it early on, that there was some suggestions, but I just, it'd be interesting to see what we, what we finalize on, on what, what we could do just to make it better. And I'd like to make a plug for keeping ATV access on the, on the land if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Dexter Lezenby, I'm not a public speaker, so I'm gonna pretend that I'm not getting an Oscar or something. I would, I would very easily trade this operation for everything else that is already up on the H Road. My house is 12 feet off of the H Road, at the top of Goat Hill. I can tell you in my bones, every single truck that goes by. When they get to my house heading south, their engine brakes go on. My windows rattle. In the summer, I hear every single truck. Nobody's going 35. There's some trucks, when they have gone up to drop off equipment, they're coming back, they're easily going 45 miles an hour. I've seen multiple trucks coming up that hill at 5:30 AM in the past couple of years. If you add up all the available trucks and what they're allowed, and you put it out over the time span that they're allowed, we're looking at possibly one truck a minute. And on a busy day, there's one truck that goes up and down that hill, he probably does 50 trips a day, one truck. So what's not addressed, being addressed here, this all seems fine to me. I would love to have the amount of trucks that they're offering, but you have hundreds of other trucks that are going by every single day. And I've talked to everybody, the sheriff said, "Well, if we stopped everybody who's going 45, nobody would ever get anything done." That was his response. I've also been told that there's nothing the town can do to enforce speed limit, and there's no engine brake ordinance. So, I don't know what to do. I've talked to everybody. I've come up with nothing. I don't know, I have, if you can come up, if you can address some of these issues, it would be appreciated. Did I say everything?
Yeah. It's not, I think, my husband's, I'm Mickey Erickson, sorry, I live at the top of the H Road. And I don't think our concern necessarily is with this specific project, just that we really feel with the traffic on the H Road, the level that it has become, the planning board or whoever, and I know it's going to impact the road commissioners, they're going to need to be doing a lot of planning for this road, because the maintenance is just going to get to be a little exorbitant, I think, in the future. After every winter, and with the weather we've been having, there, there are certain repairs that need to be made. So I would like the planning board to really look at future projects, and what the impact will be for the town. And especially for the people who are really getting impacted on West Shore Drive, because that's what the extraction is. But I, that seems like, to me, there have been, and I'm sorry, I'm short of breath, I had surgery, that those impacts are going to be a little bit less because of the provisions that have been made. There's not much we can do about the traffic and the noise from that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I've, I've had a few people, and I apologize I haven't done it, wanting me to go talk to you two, because of how nice of people you are, and good friends of mine are friends of yours. And one thing that should be done, I think, as soon as possible, because of their situation, there really should be no jake breaks in that whole area. Do something to help, they really shouldn't. And I apologize, because I'd been told to go see you, and I forgot. It's not, good friend. And the one thing about the traffic on the road, it is hard, because there's so many pits. One thing that's gonna happen, the economy always slows down, and dirt's gonna be dirt cheap again, and you're gonna see the traffic go down. The other thing, I don't know how many years McCoy's taken tremendous lot out. He's got 25 trailer dumps. From my understanding is, I can't say this is fact, he's only got four or five years left and he's gone. He's the biggest impact on their road, and that's a long time to wait. He's got way, he's got a lot of trucks. Not to say bad, but I wanted to go see you guys. Definitely, they should, they have to protect this house the best way they can, and I'm all for that. And the starwood will be the drake, the brakes, and I hope, from what I'm hearing, some of these pits are gonna go dry, and there's gonna be less traffic. And I know that doesn't solve the problem tomorrow, but you guys have a real good complaint, you really do, and you're nice people. We hope that the town can do something with that jake break thing and whatever, try to help you guys out.
Anyone else?
I've got a quick question. Do all the pits shut down on Saturday and Sunday, truck traffic? Or is that something unique to, a request to the Pepins?
I believe they've owned it, you know. They, it was one of the things that they had, they had presented to us, I believe. In helping, working with the planning board, it was, you know, I think it was a discussion between the Pepins and the planning board. I don't know, I could be wrong, Matt might have some little help with this one, but it wasn't a demand or request just made by the planning board that wasn't agreed on.
Right, I'm just saying, if-
Yeah. You know, the previous planning board, there's, every pit has different conditions. Unfortunately, they didn't have euphony. That's the major problem right now, because, you know, there's a huge enforcement issue, but this, how do you enforce something that everybody has a different condition? So that's the problem right now, and what, the planning board is trying to get, is get on page and continue a certain path forward.
Could they be asked to consider it?
Consider what?
Not running on the weekends?
It's hard to bring somebody in who already has a condition and tell them that they're gonna have to change it.
Not tell them, ask them, if they would consider it.
Same thing. If you were allowed to, and then someone said, one of those things, you can ask, but they can say no.
It's a safety issue with the dump, obviously. Major safety issue. I think that's-
I agree.
It's a job of fun.
If, it would've been nice to have some euphony in the past, you know.
Something to think about.
Thank you. There's one other pit that also does not run on Saturday, during the summer, during the summer months.
So, Dexter Lezenby again. I went and asked somebody who drives by another operation, and I, I said, asking about trucks, because I don't know anything about trucks. We have some trucks that go by, and you don't really notice them. The new Earth trucks go by, and they might be older, I'm not sure what it is, but they're much more pronounced. I don't know, some of them might have automatic transmissions or something. But a lot of the trucks are coming up the hill, because they're carrying loads, and the drone starts at Craig Dagel's house. And I have a hearing, I have hearing aids and tinnitus, so maybe it bothers me more, but my wife doesn't, says she doesn't notice it, but it bothers me. But you hear the drone coming up the hill, and then, when they get to my house, their engine brakes go on. Not all of them, some of them are quiet. The only thing I wanted to add, so that you don't think I'm total basket case, is on summer nights and on weekends, you, you, you have a sweeter sense of how quiet it is. So, on the positive note, I do notice when it's gotten quiet again, and it's sweet, it's nice. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mark Rattenberg, West Shore Drive. A lot of my thunder has been stolen, so I've been back there crossing out things that I no longer need to bring up. I recognize gravel pits are a needed industry, and that they need to be located where the materials are found. Unfortunately, this one happens to be adjacent to the watershed, in the watershed of Square Pond. I have personally purchased cement from this gravel pit owner. However, nobody invests in a lifelong home in a quiet rural neighborhood thinking, "I really hope somebody builds a gravel pit across the street." Nobody wants to live next to a gravel pit, but they are necessary and it is an important industry. I do believe these gravel pit owners do want to operate in harmony with their friends and neighbors, and to this end, the Pepins have offered many actions he intends to take in advance to minimize these negative impacts. We appreciate his pledge to be the best neighbor he can be while running a business with such large-scale potential negative impacts on friends and neighbors. Crossed out, crossed out. I'd like to address the buffer on West Shore Drive. Currently, there's a 100-foot vegetated buffer projected for West Shore Drive, which is required and promised to remediate noise, dust, and visual impacts of the pit. At an informal West Shore Drive meeting, an increase in the buffer to 150 feet was verbally requested, agreed to by the pit owner. However, this appears not to have been enacted. We are still at the 100-foot buffer. I'm asking the gravel pit owner to consider increasing the buffer back to the 150 feet as we had potentially discussed. This would add a lot to noise, visual, and dust remediation along West Shore Drive. The extraction points are right along West Shore Drive, right along a very densely housing, housed area, and the extra buffer would make a big impact, I hope. I'm gonna skip right to my bullet list, because everything else has been addressed. Good job, everybody. So my bullet list and my wish list, much of which was volunteered in advance. Number one, enlarge the extraction buffer to 150 feet along West Shore Drive. Use silent backup beepers and flashers to reduce noise, which was volunteered. Build 20-foot berms as requested by the planning board, this was also volunteered. Limit the use of the noisy stone crusher to only a few weeks in the spring and fall, and not during the summer or early morning hours. Place the stone crusher away from population concentrations, such as West Shore Drive. It appears to be below grade, behind berms, and centered within the excavation property. Limiting the truck travel would be helpful. 35 trucks per day does sound quite busy to me, especially if all 35 trucks are driving past your front steps on H Road. I'd like to see them eliminate the disruptive early morning hours, however, they have already suggested that they're going to be doing mostly quiet work in the early morning hours from 6:30 to 7:30. It sounds like there is going to be some truck loading, which means dump trucks, tailgates- It sounds like there is going to be some truck loading, which means dump trucks, tailgates, and loaders between 6:30 and 7:30. I wouldn't run a lawnmower until 9:00 AM out of courtesy to my neighbors. So I hope they will keep things quiet in those early morning hours and not start until 7:00 or 7:30. To pledge never to build a through-road connection between West Shore Drive and H Road to limit increased traffic, which has also been pledged. To pledge never to build a driveway or road from West Shore Drive into the operating gravel pit, which according to the traffic study is not the plan. The plan is to have access from H Road. I do want to thank you for your consideration and time, and I apologize if I was less than smooth since a lot of my thunder was already stolen. Thank you for your time.
Did you get his email?
Yes.
We understand their concerns. There's, this is gonna be a slow, slow project. We don't have to take that 50-foot up close. We can put it in the ordinance in July or August, September. We can take out a little bit at one time in that to accommodate the neighbors the best we can. We're not gonna be perfect. We don't have to go in there at 6:30 at that place. We can be somewhere else at 6:30. We gotta sit down and maybe with a couple of them, with Matt, say, "What can we put in the ordinance that will, that will help you guys?" Okay, we won't go there till 9:00 then. That's fine with us. It really is. If that's gonna help you guys, we don't mind doing it. Honest, we'll put that in writing. There's little things like that we can do. I could just say, if you could come down and say, "No, we can put this in writing with you guys. We can put it running. We won't only take this out at a certain time. When we get that close, we're only gonna be that close for a little bit of time, the 100-foot. It's not gonna be 10 years straight or 2 years straight. It's a little bit. But if you guys wanna sit down with Matt and draw something out with him that you guys feel comfortable, he'll do that with you. So that's in writing and then it goes through when it gets approved. And that is the best thing for you, I know you four where you live. Think about it, sit down with him, and we wanna make it the most accommodating for you guys. Because we don't have to go there the whole month of July if that's what you want. We can say, "Okay, we're not gonna dig that one piece out till only December," whatever. Sit down so you guys still have your way of life and we're back father, but then you give us this little time, like, "Okay, we'll give you this time to take this little piece out." That's the best solution to help everybody. Everybody has different things they want, you know? These gentlemen have it, and young ladies have it tougher because of where they live. Your problem, we can solve the best to accommodate all of you. And I know Matt is, wants to sit down with you guys, come up with some kind of a plan that's somewhat, give us a little window when you want us to take it out and be back father so it doesn't disrupt all summer. That's fine. We won't go that piece all summer, but then give us a chance to do that part. And I suggest before it goes back to the planning board that you four sit down with Matt and come up with the best solution that can work for you guys as neighbors and for us to somehow get it out so that everyone can be the best it can be, okay?
I would be very interested in having a meeting here, having a meeting in our office, anybody who wants to get together and talk more about this, 100%. I think that there's some pretty quick, there's some solutions that we could do, like my dad was saying, pretty quickly, like, for one, the crusher down in this area, like, close to West Shore Drive. We don't need to have that thing going until 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning. There's no reason to have it going any earlier than that. We have it as 8 o'clock right now. That's just a little example of something that we could change very quickly. I would be even inclined to, and I'm gonna look at this more closely, but I think that we should, we should have a designated area for the crusher. The crusher is really the loudest thing. We should have a designated area that is at least 300 or 400 feet away from West Shore Drive, and we should put that right on these plans. We will draw an area on this plan and I'll point it out to you right here. If we can just have the crushing plant set up in this area right here and also set up in this area right here, which is very far away from everything, we will draw this right on the map. We'll have a line that comes right along this and we're gonna, we're not gonna have crusher here at all. We're gonna, we'll take that right out. As far as this area goes, we will increase this buffer way back and we'll show it right on the next set of plans that we submit to the town. There is not gonna be a crusher anywhere in this area, anywhere down in this area. We would like to have a screening plant in those areas that's a lot quieter. I wanna really, I wanna change that on the plan so that the crusher is only allowed to be in this area, and I think that we should be allowed to operate the crusher down in this area because of that huge, huge, huge banking that we were telling you guys about. Because we really don't think there's gonna be any noise impact in this area. So, that's one thing that we can quickly do, and we're very open to discussing other things that we can do to really alleviate any concerns, for sure. I'll leave it at that.
Jeremy Smith on West Shore Drive. What was the buffer? I mean, our driveway is literally right across that little stream that cuts up through the top of the hill. What did you say the buffer, did you say it was 100 foot, 50 foot on either side of that? Is that 100 on either side or 50?
It's 100 feet from the, from the road.
Not from the stream.
Oh, streams, oh. So, the ordinance is 75, but the planning board has asked for 100 because the state has asked for 100 and the planning board has gone suit with what the state is asking.
Also, kind of like, so 50 feet on either side of the stream, so 100 foot total, is that? Or is that a...
No, 100 on each side.
On each side, too, okay, all right.
It's right here, the area is talking about, right here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just got one, one more question. You can just bring in Matt, hold it a little bit. That's good, right? Okay, it's fine. So, from what, my understanding is, for no reason whatsoever, there will be no access from West Shore Drive to access any of this property at any point in time? Because I noticed like, as you come up Willow Street, it seemed like it'd be a great area to access that lower portion of that pit.
Donated.
That's the donated part right there?
He's talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, the outside of Willow is further down on the map.
Like, right, right, right there, if you were to go from there up to there.
That part's gonna be privately owned and not done.
That's not part of the actual extraction area?
No, that's not part of the extraction area, but there's never gonna be like an access point to drive your vehicles or whatever to go up into, to get to the extraction area, which is kinda considered, you know, work-related. Good driveways, my driveways, no.
We don't plan, we don't plan on trying to cram that low to get inside and get gravel out of West Shore Drive.
No, not extract gravel out, but if you were to take, I mean, they've already stripped, land stripped that about 10 years ago, so you can go from my driveway down to there. So, I just, where it's a construction site, there won't be a continuance of like Willow Street to go over to that extraction points.
They're making gravel roads take ground from there down.
No, I'll probably go down there with my snowmobile, but you'll never see a dump truck.
No, I'm not a dump truck, I don't even want to have, have my driveway turned into your pickup work trucks going down.
They would never let that culvert go on. That's on the other side of the culvert, isn't it?
Yeah.
They would never let it turn over that way.
Oh, Jeremy, yeah. Going to be workers' access. No.
Anyone else for comments or questions? All right, well, we'll close the public hearing for tonight. Thank everybody for coming out. All right, thanks for staying, Matt.
No problem. It's a good time to...
Now that it's quiet and...
Yeah.
We can fill our questions, I think we have, might have a few from the board members.
Hey, what's this promised 150-foot buffer that, that they were saying?
I don't know if I fully agree with that one.
I'm just curious. It's just a sidebar, it's kinda, I heard that, I was like...
Yeah.
What's 50 feet?
That was it, yeah. I don't know when that was...
Oh, you know that?
Yeah. I am, I wanna put a bigger buffer in for where the crusher can operate, like I was saying. I wanna keep that right away from everybody. But I think that 100-foot buffer is pretty reasonable. I really don't think from experience that you're gonna be able to see us. There's gonna be enough of a visual screening, and there's gonna be enough of a screening from the noise as well. With 100-foot buffer is pretty significant, especially with that berm.
I was just asking because it was a concern that, from them, because they were told that there was 150 feet, and so I figured I'd address it just for a quick minute.
Yeah. I would honestly be willing to give it up in a heartbeat, but I'd kind of explain that there's, there's only so many areas on this site where there is actually good gravel. I've done a lot of test holes out there, and this is just kinda one of those areas. So it makes it, everybody's looking at this project like there's 10 million yards of material out there. There's not. There's probably enough to keep our company chugging for 15 years, maybe 20 years, but this isn't like a, it's not like there's like tons of material across this whole site and I have a choice of just going wherever I wanna go. Yeah.
But some of those other things, Matt, like moving the crusher 100 feet away or 300 feet away and shortening the hours and when it's gonna be done, you could update that in the plan and put it on the charts.
I agree, yeah. I could, yeah.
You said about 9:30, 10:00, you said for crushing? That should help.
I'll get that in for the next middle.
Will you be able to have that, so the next time, because you're going away for the January, next January meeting? Do you think you can have that for the February, first week in February?
Sorry, I got my brother's wedding. Yeah, I can have that for the first week of February.
Well, talk to Kyle and see if they can get it, you know, let, well, let's not make empty.
Well, he's the wild card sometimes, he's...
Yeah, right. I do have some emails that they have submitted for documentations for their veronal pools. I think you got them all submitted now?
Yes.
Yeah.
He said 9:30 or 10:00 you'd start to rock crusher, but I have my notes.
I think 9:30, 9:30 sounds pretty good. I think 9 o'clock sounds pretty good, actually. I have it at 8 o'clock right now.
Right, but you did say, is that, my notes are right, says Matt Pepin, 9:30, or 10:00.
You got me on, you maybe give up Saturdays at the last meeting.
Right, well, I'm just saying, you know...
Pure 9 to 5 operation.
Being a man of your word, you know?
Crushing on Saturdays.
Yeah.
I think we should, probably should...
What do you think, 9:30 or...
Okay, I say 9:30 for the extraction area near the West Shore Drive and the extraction area near the H Road, but I wanna still be able to start at 8 o'clock if I'm in the wash plant processing area, which we all know is in the middle of the property. I'd like to stick with the 8 o'clock start time for just that one area because that is so far secluded from everything. I think that's fair. And in the other areas, go with 9:30. As in all the extraction areas. And the extraction areas near West Shore Drive, I'm gonna make it at least a 300-foot buffer for any crushing activity.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see is if you just reach your numbers at the end and then we set one time. Who's really gonna be there monitoring that? I think it would just be straightforward to pick a time like 9 o'clock, put it in the plan and...
Roll with it?
Yeah, make sure that your equipment's not near the edge and put that area in there.
Okay.
And that's how I see it. It's all about the amount of noise, it's all about that. It's like if you start...
You think 9 would be better than...
I know.
So we got an 8 for the area. What are you thinking, 9 then? 9 for the extraction area, I'm okay with 8 o'clock at the...
Yeah, I just think it...
One time would...
It's hard, it's, he's saying it's hard to enforce something like that.
Because he could get a call and...
Project, you come down the line, we have a set time.
How about 9 across the board, Matt?
These are portable units too, so they can be moved. So if something happens and you go, "Okay, we gotta go another 50 feet this way."
That's true. Yeah, it's not a fixed structure.
Yeah, and I like the idea that your dad had that when you get that close part to the road, that you're just working, "Okay, we're gonna do it during this time of year and there's the least amount of people here, less intrusive." I mean, the way you guys wanna work that out, it's, it seemed good.
Right, I don't think we're gonna put that in.
No, I'm not talking about us putting in the ordinance, I just like the way that you're thinking.
It's a good neighbor.
Yeah, I like the good neighbor attitude. They're doing a good thing to the neighbors. Yeah, we shouldn't have to write down every rule in the book, I mean, every once in a while, it's a, I'm still a handshake guy.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah, it used to mean so.
9 across the...
It did.
So, how about 9 across the board then?
I wanna stick with 8 in the processing area.
Well, the problem is if he gets a call, his, you gotta look at...
Oh, yeah.
I'm just not showing up.
Right, well, number one, that's the other problem, but...
He won't be there till 9.
But you know, if they hear, if they hear an echo from it, they're gonna, he's gonna get a phone call and then he's gonna have to chase it down or send, you know? That's why I'm thinking one start time would...
I'm gonna have the thing on my voicemail, if you have any complaints about this same pit, go to whatever.
Our preference.
Come to his house.
Yes, I respect the sanctity of early morning hours. I'll move it to 9 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
But you know, nobody's gonna hear.
That way, he doesn't get a phone call at 8 o'clock saying they're crushing in this, but you're supposed to be in a different area. It's just a uneven, it's even keel.
Right.
That'll be the guy who crawls over the berm and is 50 feet away from the crusher.
Oh my God. You're gonna, you're gonna get my blood boiling.
What's that?
The issue with the insurance.
Oh, yeah, but...
Remember I told you that there was a light kind exchange that happened with the property? So there was some weird tax stuff that happened.
Originally...
One of the entity's names was wrong in the beginning and...
Field Sand and Gravel or something was on there?
Yeah, yeah, it was on there and it wasn't supposed to be, and so I had to update the deed, and Bernard did not forget about that.
Right.
He thought I was trying to swindle you guys for months. I don't understand what he was...
Well, you just have to update the insurance on...
Yeah.
Get the Town of Acton on there.
Get the Town of Acton, oh.
The certificate is made out of the Town of Acton, you know?
Okay, I'm a little confused there. I think that might have been like an example or something that we gave you guys of like a bond, maybe? I didn't...
No, you said, you're citing the insurance. Certificate of Insurance.
Oh, for Newfield Sand, oh, okay. That was a certificate of insurance for the company, just proving that we had adequate technical and financial capability to operate the pit. That's, it's a, it's a certificate of insurance for the company, our Pepin and Sons, right? Is what you were looking for?
Right, I believe so.
Yeah. It doesn't have anything to do with reclamation.
I never is it.
I thought he was trying to say that it was like a...
No, it has nothing to do with liability insurance. You have to show us you have liability insurance. And the certificate holder you gave us is Town of Newfield, which...
Or Newfield Sand and Gravel. Oh, yeah.
That was, can I see that?
Gave us. Yeah, well, Bernard was saying it could be for that property, but it's a carryover.
John brings his documents. Yeah. No, it's for all these companies. It's for our Pepin and Sons Inc., Pepin Pre-Cas, David and Denise Enterprises, Newfield Sand. It's, these are all the...
Town of Newfield.
For the Town of Newfield. Where do you see that? Oh, certificate holder, Town of Newfield. That's weird that my insurance company would do that. I must have slipped up and told, I must have told them Town of Newfield is supposed to be Town of Acton. Okay.
Yeah, we're better than Newfields. Don't take my piece, pay. Yeah, trying to sneak one out of here on us. Matt, I'm still, I've been asking for six months now, and your letter that we read before the meeting today said that you got nothing left to give us from communications from Stan Tech and the state. The first time, not the first time, but at one point, probably a couple of months ago, you gave us an email that said, "Hey, here's, here's the story." you gave us an email that said, hey, here's, here's the story. And the certified environmental scientist said, I think we can change the results because again, the original report called that, pool by H Road, SVP. The scientist said, I think we can change the results and he goes on to say, would you prefer a letter to attach to the previous study? Or revise report? Now, I don't know what you said to that. But that again tells me that you had to tell the state that the initial submission was not right. That's what I've been looking for. And then when I said that last time, I got another email from our boy Tetra. It said, I don't understand the confusion. The state has said, well, I get that, but we don't have what you told them to change their mind. That's what I'm looking for.
It would have been obvious.
He's looking for your response about the vernal pool too.
The information that was given to the state.
Yes, exactly.
I have asked this engineer, Tom Tetra, to give me every single piece of shred of paperwork that he has on this and he assures me that I have it all. So.
And how could the state say, based on local knowledge that they don't have, that that pool is man-made?
I think what's happening is this guy is, is an engineer and the state has, they have like a map of where they think vernal pools are located, but until a scientist actually goes out there and looks at them and verifies whether they're vernal pools or not, then it's kind of up in the air and they take the word of an environmental scientist.
Right, who said it was a significant vernal pool in the reports.
Yeah, he did, but then the verdict was that it was man-made.
Right, why?
Because going there and looking at it, you can tell the excavation occurred there. It's very, it's very.
That's what he said originally. It was partially man-made, partially regular. You know, you could have that distinction. So you went back to him to convince him it was totally man-made to change that report. And if he's not going to give it to you, then what I want to ask is, um, the board asked Jason to contact the POC, we have on response from Maine, and get a copy of the file that he rendered the decision on and set up a phone call so we can talk to him. And I'll talk, I know schedules are tough during the day, but I'll make myself available, um, to talk to him. It's, somebody had to give him something to render that decision. Because if all he got was what you gave us back in May.
Yeah.
He's not going to, he's going to say it's an SVP.
He, this, the same engineer is making the same judgment call. You're saying that that engineer determined it was a vernal pool and then he determined that it was a man-made vernal pool.
He said, at first, we've been over this since July, Matt, since July. What he said initially. And now I'll have to find it. You'll have to bear with me, but, um, there's a category that they say that it's both man-made and, you know, man-enhanced and natural. That's the block he checked. The report, um, identified nine significant vernal pools. This all started because when you gave us the charts, there were eight. Where did one go? So I looked. It was the one on H Road disappeared. And everybody verbally says, well, local knowledge, it's man-made. Okay. But your report to the state said it was SVP. It was both. So something, somebody had to tell the state to change that.
Yeah, it was Tom Tetra. I'll have him come to the next meeting if you want. He can explain it because I, I'm at a loss.
I just want the document.
I've been asking him for the documents. He's not giving me anything. I, I don't know what else to tell you.
I'd like to have Jason get the file from the state.
I can see what I can do.
I'm not hiding anything from you. I swear to God. I asked this guy, give me everything you have. Where's, do we have a copy of the email that I provided from him? So I can read that?
There it is. He asked you, how do you want to tell him? I just read it to you.
Can I look at that, please?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you prefer a letter or an amended report? So you either send a letter or an amended report or some other document.
Where's the more recent email that I sent? This is from.
Doesn't say anything. It says, I don't understand and he gives us the response from the state.
Can you show him the one that Tom Tetra sent after, like the one back in the end of December or in November?
Here's the second one. It doesn't say anything. I don't understand the confusion. It's man, it's man-made and here's what the state said. Again, somebody had to tell the state that.
I'm sure they did tell the state that.
Right, so why can't I get that document?
I don't. I'm not sure they even give that information to the state unless the state asks for it.
Well, again, what you gave the state said SVP. That, the state is not going to say, oh no, that's man-made. They're not, they don't have that knowledge. They can't.
Yeah, but they're going to trust a, an engineer to tell them whether it is.
The engineer said it's an SVP.
Yeah, and, but it is an SVP. It was a man-made SVP.
After the, after you sent this in, he changed his mind. I want to see the document where he changed his mind. That's it.
Looking for a paper trail that aligns up because right down is out of alignment.
I will find that paper trail, but when, when an engineer, when an engineer takes that stamp and he puts it on that piece of paper, he is in massive legal trouble if what he's, if what he's saying is inaccurate and true.
That's why I just want to see the piece of paper because he on paper said it was an SVP, originally.
Do we have a copy of that latest email? Because I thought that he.
It's right here. It doesn't say anything. It says, I don't understand the confusion. It's man-made and here's what the state said. It did not give us. Found this from May. Yeah, that's the one I just showed him. Okay.
This guy, you got to go.
No, there's a more update. Where's the most recent one? And all of it, I, I sent it.
The email?
An email with six attachments on it.
I think it was. Recently, the other day, right?
I'd like the file that they made the decision.
I just buried it. Hold on.
This is outdated.
Yeah, I'll get to him. I've had plenty of conversations with Mark.
No. Hold on.
Yeah, something will change with the report. Someone had to generate that.
Is this what was sent to the state? And that's what we think was sent to the state.
That was what was sent to the state, the May 16th or whatever it is report.
IFW's determinations on pools, meanwhile, the fisheries made the same determination. Attached screenshot below which agreed with all the information and determinations provided on the form.
But the form we see says it's significant. That's my point. So he's saying that they sent something in that said it wasn't. All I'm asking for is to see that.
He wants to know if the report was amended after and then.
Report was sent. Let's see, where were those attachments I sent? Now, there's an email that had three or four attachments. This was a week or two ago that he sent this over. What have they written with this right here?
Yeah, I printed up everything and gave it to the board.
Three new attachments?
Yeah.
I didn't get any attachments.
Um, I'll go verify and give me. Two seconds. I'll move back.
There were, I swear to God, there was three attachments on there and I think that that's the information that you're looking for.
All right, good. I hope so. Were they pictures?
I mean.
No, they were.
We didn't get that.
They were PDFs. They were like, it was all this documentation.
No, it was all in there.
I didn't get that. All I got was like.
Actually, I might be able to pull it up on my email.
That's what I got today.
Email to Jason Sevigny, December 12th. I keep asking engineers for additional information they have sent to the state and they keep telling me there isn't outside of what has already been presented to the town.
Well, Matt, hey, maybe it's in attachments that I didn't see. Do you have them?
Kevin, did you say there were them?
No.
The engineer brought coffee out.
Yeah.
I don't think I got that one. Normally, I print out anything he sends. This is the last one I got from him.
There was.
I'm still.
Here we go.
Said himself that from holidays. Someone was passed out.
It is.
Look at the things we do for you, Matt. We stay out here in the ice.
I appreciate that.
Not only if we had sand to get us home, you know?
You know, I asked the town if we could pay to stripe the road.
Too narrow here.
I thought it would be an improvement. It, but the answer I got is that you can't do it unless someone plans on maintaining it.
A single line would be good because.
We went through this a few years ago.
Yeah.
He said, well, we don't want to be re-struck again and again because once it's struck initially.
You have to keep.
Milton Mills are what they're doing every year. With all the heavy trucks that come up out of Milton Mills.
I like the one stripe.
Over the bridge.
The one stripe you can stay next to easier because I drive a truck. I weigh 1,500. And to try to judge what the side of the road is on the side of the truck is very hard. So I'm running off that stupid pavement all the time. Someone else is over, the yellow line keeps people in the middle, off the edge.
Yeah.
But not crossing.
Right.
One single line, I really think that would do.
Matt, I apologize. I didn't get this footage to these guys. And if this is what they're looking for, that is my bad and I do apologize.
I got it here too.
And there's, there's two other attachments which I will not be printing. You can provide them with them. There are 110 pages each. So that, I'm not printing. Especially tonight.
177 kilobytes. IFW results. Well, everything's right here.
Send it.
Revise.
But, uh, no, that is my, my, I am completely sorry, guys. That's my bad and Matt.
Something's been going on for real. It makes me feel better.
It's all. I feel better too.
Just understanding.
You need to get your blood pressure going, John.
I thought you were blowing me off.
Not intentionally.
I will take the route for this one. But there's, uh, there are, I, I don't know if they're new binders. I'm just not going to, um, Matt can provide us with those if that, if they are. I'm not going to. Yeah, they're 110 pages. I think there's two of them in there. So one might be the old, one might be a new one.
It's like Matt's going off the supply.
Is that a letter that describes a change?
This is from the DEP to Tom Tetra.
No, I don't want that one. We've got. I think we got.
I don't think you do. That's it. Keep them going. This is, uh, current as of July 5th, 2022.
Yeah, now see what you said. To me.
Pass that back to John too. That's his.
What's that? The first two pages?
Uh, this is, um, a ta, one of the attachments, um, on, uh, I think it was one of the last ones. It starts.
July 5th?
Yeah. Is this the right pool? Very first page?
I have this document, but it's got a number of other pages because it's got.
It says identify.
The very first one, this isn't even ours. Doesn't even apply to this project. It's a window.
Oh, good, okay.
Why are we getting windows?
Great. Yeah, that, and that's what I'm thinking was with the binder. Maybe if they resubmitted the binder.
This is, this is in that.
It's going to cost me a lot of money in ink right here. I got to get this over to you guys.
Yeah, and bind this.
Got to bind this?
Yeah. We want nice pictures too. Not paper pictures. We want nice.
You want color?
Yeah, very nice film.
Yeah, this is just saying about the field, you know, based on the field studies that was sent to them.
Yeah, we already had that.
Right. So I don't, I don't know if the other ones that have a lot of.
Can you have the number on it? Do you know what your number is on that picture panel?
Yeah, because like.
Wasn't it 11?
Page five, page five has a list of the Pepin ones.
Yeah, that sounds right.
These other ones aren't even ours. These are other, these, these have nothing to do with us. This Thomas, whoever it is, has nothing to do with us.
Tom Tetra is the lamp.
Well, if that's true, that the first page is saying based on food, determine that vernal pool identified above on the property is not significant. Is that the right vernal pool?
Yeah, it was. I, I'm not disagreeing with that. I just want to see the engineer who changed his mind. I want to see the documentation that he gave the state just upon his change of mind.
This is it.
And I suspect it's in the 350 pages that. Coming our way. Yeah, hopefully it's in the cover letter that describes this change of thought.
I think it's all, I think it's all here.
Email too. I'll do that and you can just browse through it and if, uh, I'll look through it tomorrow too, but, um, I don't have a lot of time to. But I'll, I'll forward you the email over and, uh, you can look at it.
This is July 5th. It's 4811.
That's the state number.
But it says 11. It's, it's listed on the other pages because it's 8, 9, 10, 11. So I'm just taking that as 11. It says on the survey, the, uh, green signature. July 5th.
Are you looking at what he just gave us?
What he just gave us, okay, go here. Uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, if they are ordered.
4811.
This one? And it's just down here.
4811, right? ID number?
4811.
Is that the one we're talking about?
Matt, what was the date on that email? No, I'm asking him when he sent it to me. Was it the 8th?
Looks, hello, Jason. Yeah, the, September 8th. And you'll see, Jason, that there's, he also put on, he gave you attachments for two emails that he sent out. To the state. One was sent to. Vernalpool.mdifw main.gov.
Yeah, that's what's confusing because this first page talks about a number we don't.
All I care about is the one fell off.
So what is that number on here? I believe it is 11.
It, well, it.
And it says.
4811. It'll be further back. It'll say it's not significant. It'll be when. 4811?
Yeah.
Okay.
48.
Yeah, 4811.
Does he go back to the first page?
I have it here.
Yeah, so go to the second and last page at the bottom. It's 4823. Now they're saying it's VP 11 DB, not SVP. This is actually saying.
Well, see, all these numbers are one number and they're referring to other numbers here that aren't even on that. And going, where's the cross-reference? And who's changing all these numbers? And going, where's the cross-reference? And who's changing all these numbers?
Well, one's the state.
Yeah, one's the state.
I know. It's atypical government things, but that's where we need to cross-reference. If four eight one one on this sheet, what number is it on their sheet? Because I can't, I can't track this. This one's four eight three eight.
If you look at the Stan Tech report, Stan Tech identified each pool by a number.
Right.
That's the one the state is responding to, but they have assigned it all a different number. These forty-eight.
That's what I mean. Because if four eight one one is the one we're talking about, it could very well be the four eight three eight they're talking about right here and calling it non-significant.
It's a different town.
What is it? Where do you get a different town?
Is it the Stan Tech? Well, I have eleven DB, right, is the one here.
Well, this is, it seemed like they were trying to play fast and loose. That's, that's my point. They're identified by Stan Tech. The state, when they rendered the decision, has assigned it a state number.
I'm following. I just think also. Yeah, because they're IDs. Yeah, because there's a list of the Vernal Pool identification according to them or act.
And that's where I got the eleven.
Right. Well, the eleven isn't on there. They start at four seven, forty-eight seventeen, and they run to forty-eight twenty-six. And that's not the same reference.
Go to the second and last page on what was just passed out, and we had that before.
Forty-eight twenty-six. Yeah, I see those.
Go to the bottom and it's VB eleven, VP eleven DB. That's the one.
And the official one, they've changed it to four eight two three.
Well, that's the wrong application.
They get three different agencies all signing their own numbers, but they give you no cross-answers from us as to what they're talking about.
So this is the one.
It's dumb too. Sounds like a government operation.
Well, when you go to the detail, you can cross-reference, you know, whatever their number is.
I'll, I'll get you the email. I'll even forward it to you before I leave tonight. And. Yeah. Apologize for not getting that.
We'll do it easy on you this time. Next time, you'll read any emails.
What page is this?
Seeing anything?
Uh, yeah, that one hundred and twelve page PDF.
Yeah.
I think it's, I'm trying to find the page number, but I think I found it. It's. How the heck do I get the page number?
Would be towards the end, right?
Okay, it's actually towards the beginning. It says SVP oh five DB.
Do you know how you had the page?
Natural modified pool with road on the edge.
Which page is it? Does it say on the bottom for you?
Oh, five? You want to show the.
Well, the new report changes the numbers.
Okay, so I was looking.
Oh, five in here though?
So SPV oh five DB, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Originally it was eleven. SPV.
Pool is found off the gravel road, Red Gate Road, in north edge of the project site. That's, that's. Yeah, I'm just reading. So this, that's, I'm reading the page.
Maybe this one? You said it.
Yeah.
Garage within, pool within wetland, W O one D B C, road embankment next to pool.
Yeah, that's oh five DB, right?
Yeah.
It seems like that.
It's eleven DB on that sheet right here. The original sheet.
Go to this, yeah, this is the summary.
It's eleven DB?
Yeah.
No, it's right here. Yeah, you're right, Jason. Should be towards the end, right?
Um, it's got fourteen. Give me a sec.
Maybe on this one.
Thirteen.
WW.
Twelve. So I have. Seven. Oh, gee, skip it.
Already, I got it. I found it. It's on the backside of it.
Thirteen.
Large, deep pool, wetland, next to paved road.
Yeah.
Page three.
SPV, yes.
There's four.
How the hell did you expect me to read that?
Well, deep.
You wanna see the writing on my phone?
I'll look at the whole thing. I wanna look at the whole thing. Email it so they can scan it.
I can tie a little fly, but I can't see.
Do whatever it looks like.
See?
Yeah, I can go down and print up just those pages.
It's not happening. The downfall of getting old.
Well, it's a PDF document. You can do a search. Just search for that number.
Have it in this one. You just wanna see.
A scientist.
People program so people can read books and stuff.
I got you.
Local knowledge.
The local knowledge is only good until all the locals die that know about it. Then there's no more local knowledge on that specific, correct?
Well, local knowledge dies.
They should be going, going on.
Local knowledge.
Residents set at the site all up there basis. That's all I wanna say with that.
Well, yeah, because you can drive all up and down any of these old roads and that can be. But local knowledge back then, but.
Do you have specific issues?
I have a couple of things. I mean. With the maps, we got those at the last meeting.
Hey, you wanna deal with, help us save the maps for Gavin?
Sorry.
Stop texting. We'll get you out of here, will we?
Okay. I already got beat up pretty hard tonight already. Oops.
We're not here to beat you up today. Next time.
All right, you can beat me up next.
Because you have a vacation.
I need a vacation. What's the question?
So, yeah, in the new maps, we got reclamation plans for the re-extraction areas.
Yeah.
I kinda wanna see a reclamation plan for the non-extraction areas. And then I was hoping, hoping you would put, put the trees, where are you putting the plant trees on the, all four of the reclamation plans?
So there wouldn't be a reclamation plan for the, where the garage is? Because that's like a permit structure.
No, just one, two, and the processing area.
Okay.
So.
You have had different trees and pine trees.
Trees and you know, I'd like to see the whole thing re-vegetated with native vegetation. So whatever you can do to. Show it on the map what you plan on doing.
I have shown the trees on the slopes.
They're shown on here?
I'm not sure if it made it to this set of plans.
This is H or.
This is the reclamation.
Yeah. This is the newest one I have. So what you were saying, a long age road.
Yeah, we're gonna show it on the plan.
Right. That's kind of just what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
One, two, three, and non-extraction areas. For at least the part of the processing area with the non-extraction.
So, so the, the letter that I sent over, there was a little bit of new information. The only permit by rule that I was, that I need to do for the project is for the Vernal Pool encroachment. We thought, we thought that we might need a permit by rule for the maintenance garage and for the processing area, but it turns out that's actually more complicated with the DEP. That's a, how do they word it? Site plan, like, or. I said it, I said it. I got the letter right here. Let me see what it. Stormwater permit.
Yeah, right here, yeah.
So we need a stormwater permit for the processing area and for the, and for the maintenance garage area. And I'm, I am told that that, it's, we'll definitely be able to do it, but with the DEP, it's a three to six month process. So, you know, I'm kinda hoping. Yes, and you guys can make it a condition of approval that I have to have this submitted before I can do any digging out there. Yeah, okay.
I don't know if this is any different from. The one that was submitted to us in that.
No, it's completely different.
Oh, is it?
It's a different guy who did the study and.
It says pool.
He marks it unnatural and studying natural.
Pool origin unnatural.
The term unnatural.
Isolated depression.
Oh, that was from, this is dated May seventeenth and the original report was May sixth, I think.
So Matt, did this guy go and do a whole new study or did he just work on that one pool? Because I only printed up SV, SPV, whatever it is, eleven CB.
So one day later, they, a different guy looked at it.
One day?
One day.
Do you know if he did a whole different report?
I've indicated survey dates fourth, four thirteen.
You're talking Tom Tetrio?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, he didn't do this. It's another guy.
Is that somebody that?
Observer name is Derek.
It's a different observer.
The egg masses went up on the second visit.
Yeah, my brain's shuffling here. I thought that Stan Tech Engineering did the work on that, but there was. Yeah, oh, okay. So then he did work for him.
The egg numbers.
Okay. Tom Tetrio, that was Stan Tech.
To me.
Contact information. He was, this is public to the project.
That's the, yeah. Does that?
Were you looking for John or?
Yeah, I, I wanna look at the whole file.
This is what was sent right to the state.
Yeah, that was that.
Where do you see, he was out the day later. Where do you see that? Is this one I have? Am I wrong reading?
Choose the best description for the landscape setting. Isolated depression. Pool is immediately adjacent to H Road with signs of historic excavation.
Four thirteen and four twenty-seven, which went into the sixteen May report. And then after sixteen May, the next day, they had a different guy go out and change the report. Or submitted in.
Yeah, they got two visits.
I wanna look at the whole file.
There's stuff in there, but it dries up during the summer. Drying out completely in most years.
Second page.
Yeah. I gotta be on a plane tomorrow at five AM.
It's all right. You've got plenty of time to sleep when you're on it.
That's right. Oh, don't say that.
Yes, no.
He already had to push his flight out just to come to this public here.
Really?
Okay.
Good for now.
Did they say that? Oh, really?
Satisfied.
Okay.
See, not only do we help with the plans.
You do have the alerts coming in. Oh my God, I'm gonna, I hope it doesn't get canceled.
So.
No way. Oh my God.
So that's a whole new, that's a whole new. You know, the one that we just did for eleven, if that's, if that's completely different, then they wanna see it. They're gonna wanna see that. Hundred and ten page document. That I only printed up three pages, four pages of it.
Oh, so they want.
You're gonna send me the file.
I'm gonna send you the file. Will you be fine with that or you want to have it, you want a hard copy?
I'll be fine with that. I'm particularly interested is their cover letter or some sort of.
There was no cover letter to that, what I just gave you, that. It started out with like SPV five.
Yeah. How about the other big file? Just send it to me. I, I can look to see what I'm.
I'll send it to you.
It's fine.
Okay, like always, I'm trying to take notes here. I will re-verbalize this in an email.
Oh, you're leaving tomorrow, so I won't have a conversation.
Yeah. Just what you guys are looking for, but I think I'm.
International thing, just call him. It's extra on his end.
You have plenty of time. We'll put together, Matt, when we.
That's so nice.
Well, I'll review the, the tape, the minutes too, and we'll put together an email for you for the middle of next week.
That'd be nice. Yeah.
To, just to refresh everything too and make sure that we're on the same page.
So we get a vote on this at the next meeting or are we not? We should be getting close. All right.
We have to get all the, view all the final documents.
Right.
We're getting pretty close.
I'll throw one other turd into the punch bowl. I think based on what we heard tonight. One of the things we had talked about in setting up that entrance. Transportation study, and I guess we never followed through, was to include the number of trucks coming from existing pits on H Road.
We did talk about that.
We talked about it, but that analysis didn't make it into the transportation study. So I think one of the things we have to wrestle with is, do we wanna dig out that information? And then provide that to somebody to, to.
Well, and the other comment was about the entrance. Someone made a comment that how it was so close. Do you remember that?
Yeah, well, the, the transportation plan we got did address that. You know, the things she suggested addressed that. But what wasn't addressed was the increased number of trucks.
On the road.
He just added another company with the same regulation of only having so many trucks on the road per day, but now we have four companies doing the same thing.
And all the other pits.
Makes sense because we didn't look at that overall effects of that.
I mean, with all due respect, that, that, that was, they tried to address that at the moratorium and the town said, they voted it down. They decided not to have a moratorium. If there was an overwhelming concern by this community that we needed to do a full-blown study on the H Road, that would have, I think that would have shined through during the moratorium. And that the town would have stopped and slowed down and done that. But I don't think that every applicant who's trying to have a business on the H Road is responsible for providing very expensive, you know, and time-consuming reports about the activity of every other business on the road.
No, but it should inform the decisions for your application, right? So if an independent study said adding fifty more trucks or a hundred more trips a day max. Overloads the road or is, you know, way more dangerous, that's something we'd have to consider. But we didn't, that's not how we framed, even though we talked about it, it's not how it got framed in the, in the study. I mean, she did it, the study, she addressed the entrance part and the sites and the speeds and that sort of thing.
And she did a traffic count too, right there, didn't she? At the entrance.
A specific traffic count.
The assessment.
We heard from, from several residents who were concerned with, you know, did we consider the number of existing trucks going up and down the road? And we had talked about doing that and we didn't follow through.
My quick comments are that there are some operators out there that aren't playing by the rules and they should be held more accountable. And, and other businesses shouldn't have to, to, you know, bear the weight of that burden.
Saying they're running more trucks than there are trucks.
Well, maybe even come to the point where it doesn't fall under our purview. It may be the wrong.
Some of them have already been before our.
The whole truck thing is, everybody comes out, everybody points the finger and says it's an enforcement issue. How the heck do you enforce that? I'm not gonna sit out there with a lawn chair and counter and go flick. You know what I mean? So it's, it's playing by the rules. Nobody plays by the rules. I'm sorry.
And the other one we just passed. So it's hard for him to enforce.
Or maybe our other committee in town.
All the other pits. Because they're on such different wavelengths other than the two that we, yours and the other one that we've done. You understand what I'm saying? And to get him out there, you know.
I, yeah. I mean, I'm, I understand. The enforcement's tough.
We can always have a DOT officer sit here and we'll see who's legit and who isn't legit. We can always have a DOT officer sit here, and we'll see who's legit and who isn't legit.
Right.
That's, you know, the town can do that, too. Right? And, you know, how many uncovered loads to buy CO day, that's, that's a DOT offense. And now they're crossing into New Hampshire, which puts on a federal DOT book, which is a little distic versus distic for state.
They got in a lot of trouble for that, going across-
Well, you need diesel cars and everything else, but, you know, that's another route. And it wouldn't be a good time for a lot of trucks. Maybe some of yours, maybe not, you don't know. And go right down to windshield washer fluid. If you don't have that, it's DOT offense. So.
I did try, I did-
I only know that because I got written up, I drove a dump truck, so.
If you're looking at a study to try to assess, um, you know, what kind of shape the pavement is in, or the subsurface is in, that's, I hope we're not, that's, if you're really trying to understand the impact of these-
It's all about safety.
Safety.
That's what you're, these people.
So you're worried about the width of the roadway?
I'm worried about the number of trucks traveling up and down the road each day.
The addition to-
What's the safety concern? Because the number of trucks is-
Adding fifty trucks, a hundred trips a day, to what already exists.
What is your specific safety concern there? What, what's going to happen? If there's-
Additional traffic.
The additional traffic-
So there's more fender benders?
For, for accidents, for increa-, you know, that poor gentleman who is so eloquent, who's got tinnitus, hearing, you know, not twenty trucks a day, but now seventy trucks a day, whatever it is, what is the impact of, of increasing that from a safety perspective?
You know, every summer, there's, there's twenty times more people in this community for that three-month stretch. What's the, what's the impact of that additional traffic on the H Road? I, I don't see an impact. I see a lot of extra vehicles, but I don't see a lot of more accidents.
Man, I don't, I'm not going to argue about it, I'm just reflecting what the town has told us in this meeting. That's all I'm doing.
I understand, and I, I would like to try to do everything I can to alleviate the concerns, but you're starting to get in, like, it's starting to get, like, expensive studies that, like, the town, the city council needs to have the town do. Like, have an engineer go do these studies, because I, I just can't put that burden on me as an individual applicant. This is a decision that the city council needs to make, I, and that's all I can really say. I'm, I did supply the reports from Diane, and I, and I put together some ideas on how to be more safe out there, um, but I can't be accountable for, you know, trying to explain the impact of four different operations on this road. That, if, if the city council decides that they want to look into that more, then that's something that they should do. It, it's not the responsibility or my burden as an applicant here to, to provide that information.
Well, we also have another committee that deals with roads.
It'd be more of the road committee, essentially.
It's out of our purview.
But it, we have to, like, Johnson, we have to-
It's your application, ran fifty trucks a day. So it's a consideration? It's a consideration?
Like any, yeah, that's, I'm not going to disagree, yeah. One thing that he, uh, Dennis said tonight that I wanted to bring up was, he, he said that the town did two thousand dollars an acre for Seth McCoy, and he was trying to say that the town can only require a certain amount for reclamation.
Sorry, talk to the town attorney about all this.
I don't have a problem supplying more. I, if, if, if you guys want to do-
The number, the number was, came from, um, me, it wasn't, we, I just didn't make that number up. I called around, talked to some surveying companies that deal with a lot of excavation pits, and I asked them what would be comfortable, be a happy median for a reclamation thing. And, and so he, we reviewed multiple towns that are dealing with this.
Yeah.
And said, this is where the state is, this is where I feel that, not from me, this was, you know, I'm not going to throw anybody in the bus, but it came from civil consultants who deals with this all the time. Says a happy median would, is in the six-thousand-dollar range. That number was not made up. Now, the three, reason why we're not going with two thousand or a thousand dollars, which they had used in the past, what do you, can you reclaim? Say you shut your doors.
Yeah.
What can acting do with a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars? You can't even hire someone to drive a truck in for two thousand dollars.
It's not enough money.
So, um, unfortunately, it, you know, he misinformed out of line, however you want to put it, I don't know, but, um, that, I had, I've already talked to, I've already talked to town attorney and town council about it all, and, and, um, the town was in, was in, puts them in no legal issue whatsoever or anything like that.
Oh, good.
And you even agreed to saying, hey, that's, that's a good amount, that's, you know, so it wasn't, I don't think that the planning board was overstepping by asking for a, a reasonable reclamation amount.
It's not like we asked for sixteen thousand.
You know.
Right.
It was under the bus.
It was, it was, uh, yeah, it was, unfortunately, I don't know.
Sort of like, you know, dragging a feet on it or whatnot, uh, we didn't get a complete application till July of this year.
Revised.
Revised.
Final revised.
I never accused anyone here of dragging their feet.
No, but it was, it was stated, and, you know, we haven't, nothing's been revised, well, we didn't get it revised till July, so I don't know where these-
Unfortunately, it was a public hearing for your operation, not how people are conducting. You know, it, it wasn't, it was, you know, I respect the person who made the comments, but, uh, it probably, it could have been not said.
Well, it shouldn't have been said.
Well, it was neither here nor there.
Yeah.
There are requirements we have to follow. Completed documents, applications, that weren't in our hands.
And I know-
We can do about that.
And I know for a fact there are other simpler projects that took a year and a half versus a year, so, I mean, they're kind of off the cuff comments, just don't, don't address me.
Do we have anything more left for Matt?